Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting the Newton Falls City Council to order. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing?
My Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight we have Pastor Scott Rowe from the First Nazarene Church who will lead us.
Good evening, Council, City Manager, Mayor. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you and I pray for your blessing upon this meeting, Lord. Be with the City Council, be with the Mayor and the City Manager, Lord. Give them wisdom, Lord, and give them knowledge, Lord, and give them discernment. And I pray for our city that you would be with everybody, Lord God, and encourage us and strengthen us. And I pray this in your holy name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. All right, this is the regular meeting of the Newton Falls City Council. Today is Monday, October 7th, 2019 at 6:00. Please turn all your cell phones off or put them on vibrate unless prearranged. The public comment sections are limited to three minutes. We use a timer. When the timer sounds, we ask you to conclude your statements. Comment sections on the agenda are not a debate or a question and answer session. The first public comments are for agenda items only. The final public comments can be on anything you'd like. And we ask you if you'd respect your neighbors and be quiet during the meeting so everybody can hear what's going on. We'd appreciate it. Would you please take a roll?
Beer?
Here.
Alberini?
Here.
Bariak?
Here.
All right, public comments.
Katie Carl, 128 West Corey Street. You have on here ordinance 2019-26, amending for employee health insurance. There's a lot in this about Cobra. And my concern is on this. When you switch over to a new carrier, normally, and again, I'm not an expert on this, normally that the coverage is just a switch over, but since there's so much in this policy about Cobra coverage, is this going to interrupt or interfere with the coverage for the employees? Is one of my questions. And are they going to have to pay for the additional as a Cobra coverage? Is my other one, other question on that. Before you pass this, could you address that to council so they know that? The other thing, in your approval of the minutes, in your statement, and it's in the minutes, that's why I'm addressing it, Mr. Mayor, you said about the coverage or about the new office on Broad Street for the planning and zoning, that it is now handicap accessible. I brought that up to you, Mr. Lynch, and it is not handicap accessible. And there is a big step there in anybody that's in a wheelchair or with a walker, et cetera. And your reply to me when I said I couldn't get in there with a stroller and that is, you told me, "It's just a step." Well, the reason I'm stating that is it's not just a step for somebody that's disabled and not able. There's no railing there or anything else. It's not handicap accessible. And that needs to be addressed for anybody that wants to go into the new planning and zoning office because they're not able to. It's not an ADA compliant building whatsoever. And people aren't going to be able to get in there to talk to the planning and zoning administrator whatsoever. So your statement at the last meeting that it's now handicap accessible where the last office was not, it's not. So that needs to be addressed because that's a federal law and it's a federal mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Just put that on your agenda. Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna hold mine for a second because I have a presentation to make and I want to talk about the AMP conference. Mr. Zavet?
Yeah, the report I had is from planning and zoning. This past month, they passed a variance for a new Dollar General that'll be going on the Inward Line off of Ridge Road. That's all.
Mr. Bariak?
Nothing to report, no comments.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Alberini?
Mr. Mayor, we had several meetings that I attended with you, of course. I apologize, first of all, to the citizens. I had some health issues I had to deal with and missed a meeting or two, so I'm on the mend. But anyway, we met with David de Cristofaro and the J.J. Cifaro Group. We had, I had the opportunity with Mr. Lynch and the mayor to attend the Cifaro Mall, which was outstanding. Also, we attended the Venture Plastics Open House, which was a great event. And if any of you read the news last week, they were awarded a major contract with the Nissan Corporation, which hats off to those guys. And it just shows you that we're doing the right thing here in Newton Falls and partnering with successful companies and businesses. Also, we met with a franchisee, a franchisee for a potential location on Route 5. We'll see where that goes. And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Tonight, in the past, we've recognized businesses in the community that have done some good things, did remodeling, and looks nice. And tonight we want to recognize RSM Prince and Ross Sherlock. I was interested, we were going by the other day on my way, says, "Oh, look, they painted the building." I says, "They didn't paint the building, they put metal siding on the outside. It really looks nice." And that's what I did inside my workshop. Looks really good out there. Did a nice job with that. So if you'd come to the podium for a moment? A certificate of excellence. This certificate of excellence is issued for maintaining consistently high standards of care for our community by renovating the exterior of your building and is proudly presented to Ross Sherlock and RSM Prince in recognition of your continued excellence in beautifying the city of Newton Falls, 7th of October, 2019, the City Manager and myself. The council will join me over there. The manager?
You too.
What do you want me to do? Go over.
They start selling the cups at 3:30, but there's a flea market and things that go on in the morning. I think they start cooking at 11:00, so there's a lot of things going on up there. And the AMVets Post 112 on Broad Street will be having a all-you-can-eat breakfast on Sunday, October 27th, from 8:00 to 12:00. It's $7. Kids five and under are free. We met, as Councilman Alberini said, we met with a business that has some interest in coming to Newton Falls. We showed them some different sites and got some thoughts and ideas, and so we're gonna work with those. We did meet down at the dam with somebody from the YSU, looking into some things that the City Manager's gonna talk to a little bit later. That was kind of like a historic thing. There used to be a substation there a long, long time ago, back in the early 80s that we tore out, or the First Energy tore out. We did a live video at the girls volleyball game the other night. That was quite interesting, to say the least. It was a last-minute thing, and the City Manager and I did that, and it was actually a lot of fun. Don't know all the terms yet for volleyball, but it really was a lot of fun doing that. I didn't realize until here about a week and a half ago that the county commissioners did recognition for local residents. I thought that they just kind of did things that people did around the county, and the state kind of recognized people did things in the state, but that's not really true, I guess. So I sent some things down to the county, and on Wednesday, October 30th, at 10:30, the Tremble County Commissioners will be recognizing the United Methodist Church for their work over in the East River Gardens. In the summertime, they hand out meals once a week to the residents. They hand out 250 meals to them, and they do the senior complex and the rehab center. So they do that, it's their vitality group. They do that every week during the summer, and they're planning on doing some stuff now during the winter. The 4th of July Committee, which we've recognized here before, they've been doing that for 30 years, and some people have been on that committee for 30 years. And they do a lot for this community. They bring a lot of people into town. They'll also be recognizing Katie Carl for her work with the SAP and the drug rehab around town and around the county, the things that she's done to bring awareness to the drug problems in the area and how to recognize in that. So they'll be doing that. And they'll also be recognizing Ms. Hoffman, Nancy Hoffman, for her work over the years, the volunteer work she's done. Ms. Hoffman is just, again, elected as Lieutenant Governor for the Kiwanis International. I think that's a great title and a great asset to the community, so they'll read all that at the Commissioner's Office, so you're all invited at 10:30 on the 30th. I was at the AMP conference last week, and, you know, we've been having some issues with the electric or some perceived issues with, you know, electric, and the City Manager's been meeting with residents, trying to figure out what's wrong with the bills and that. But we've been working with AMP now. I think we've had four or five meetings with AMP and some discussions in looking at ways that we might be able to reduce the cost per kilowatt hour, and it's quite a challenge. But at the last meeting, Mr. Bariak, you said, and also in your letter you sent out, your campaign letter, that you want to reduce the electric rates. Can you tell me how you want to do it so I don't kind of get mixed up? How do you plan to reduce the electric rates?
I'm going to wait and see until the electric study's done, and if there's any way working with the City Manager and the council who's gonna be on, I'm gonna try my best to reduce them. I didn't vote to raise them.
Nobody here did either. They've been here for a long time.
Past council did. You were on in 2013, weren't you, sir?
I don't vote.
Let's quit this right now.
I'm just asking a question.
No, don't ask me questions. Is that on the agenda?
It's on my agenda.
Is that on the agenda?
It's on my agenda.
Oh.
I just asked a question.
Point of order, Mayor.
I just asked a question. Anyway, we have, no, I certainly do. One of the things that, there's a lot involved in your bill, and there's a lot that 99.9% of the people do not understand about your utility bill. And I'm gonna try to explain just a little bit of it tonight. I hope it's not over everybody's head.
Is this on the agenda?
It's on my agenda, sir. It's my report, okay?
It's not on the agenda.
It's my report, sir. Well, it is on the agenda. Isn't this under Mayor's report?
It's the business need.
That's exactly what it is. It's the business of the city, sir.
Well, it's not on the agenda, sir.
Anyway, you're out of order.
Why am I out of order?
You're out of order because it's my turn to talk.
I'm the law director, why I'm out of order?
It's my turn to talk, sir.
Is this on the agenda, sir?
These are the report section. This is not a agenda.
It's not a report. This is not a report he's given.
He's the chair. He can decide whether it's a report or not. If three members of council want to override him, they could.
Why would it not be a report? I went to the meeting. Anyway, down at the meeting, they discussed a lot of different things about how your electric bill works and what's involved with your electric bill. Over time, your electric bill's gonna go up regardless. I mean, there's nothing that we can do about that because of, there's two parts to your bill. There's a generation part, which is where they generate your electric, and there's a transmission part. There was some stuff on Facebook recently where a gentleman who was part of a MLM company said that he could reduce your electric bill by 20%. It used to be 30%. And I get those calls, too. And when I start talking to them, they hang up because they can't buffalo because I know what I'm talking about. So I got the name of one of the companies that was calling, and I called their office in Texas and talked to them. And what they're saying is partially correct. When they tell you that they can reduce your bill by 20%, that's not really true. If your bill is $200, you're not gonna get a 40% reduction on your bill. You're only gonna get a $20 reduction. And the reason that is, is the only thing they can discount is the transmission part of your bill. The generation side, they cannot reduce the transmission, the generation side of your bill. They can't do it. That's a fixed cost. But they can work on the, they can discount the transmission side. And on your bill, it's split up. If you look at your bill, it says transmission and generation. Part of the transmission cost, and this is where a lot of people don't understand how all the transmission costs work. We're part of a network, an ATSI network, MISO, PJM, and the RTOs that are in that area have what's called supplemental projects. Anytime an RTO wants to do maintenance or wants to fix their transmission line, they submit this project to FERC, and FERC is supposed to vet the project and see if it can be done and if it needs to be done. If FERC says, "Yes, it needs to be done," then they do the project, they put it into their rate study, and then they get, they coop their cost of the project by raising the transmission cost. We don't have any say of that. That's why the transmission costs fluctuate. But what some of the investor-owned utilities are doing is they have what's called a supplemental project. And this supplemental project, they may not want to run it through FERC. They may just do it and try to add it to the bill, to their side, so they can recoup the cost. From what I heard down there, FERC is not really doing what they're supposed to be watching these projects. They've caught a couple where the utilities have submitted a project, part of it had already been done, and they just added something else to it, wanted to redo it again. So FERC is supposed to vet all these projects and not allow the utilities to do it if it did need to be done. So that's part of the reason that there's such a fluctuation in the transmission rate, and that is for investor-owned and municipal utilities, because we all buy from the RTOs. And the RTOs is a regional transmission operator. And it's just hard to visualize how all that fits into your bill. But one of the advantages of AMP is, you know, some people say, "Well, there's a tax on your electric, on the electric bill." There is a tax. It's a kilowatt-hour tax, and it's put on by the state of Ohio. And the only benefit to the kilowatt-hour tax is anybody who's in an investor-owned utility, that money goes back to the state of Ohio. If you're in a municipal utility, that money stays in the city. So in 2018, we collected $191,000 in a kilowatt-hour tax. We sent $30,000 to the state of Ohio. We kept $161,000. So that $161,000, we can put into the general fund, or we can do whatever we want. It's free money for us to use. We don't have to send it back. Every bit of electric that we sell outside of the city of Newton Falls, that kilowatt-hour tax goes to the state of Ohio. When you talk about the annexation in the Route 5 area and with Venture Plastics and that, you know, there's some people out there saying, "You spent $75,000, and you got nothing for it, and you're doing this, and you're doing that." And then, again, you're not looking at the whole project. Venture Plastics generates $15,000 a year in taxes for the Ohio kilowatt-hour tax. We get that money. So instead of, when we finish the annexation, we'll get that $15,000 a year. Right now, it goes to the state of Ohio. So that is, you know, an asset. That's what we, that's something we can do. And the other thing is, once we finish up with Venture Plastics and they come back up to 100% of income tax, they're running $45,000 to $50,000 a year in income tax that we will probably get. So over the course of five years, which is what it will take to get the income tax up to 100%, we're gonna make about $225,000, give or take. It's not exact. I don't have, I left my paper at home, but we'll make about $225,000 on that $75,000 investment that we made. That's why you do these things. You're speculative, and you go out and you try to do these things, and how are we going to generate it? The other problem is, we're invested in hydro. One of the things that councils do, and they've done it in the past, they do it all over, you know, when you go to the council meetings, legislation goes across the table, and I'm pretty sure that a lot of legislation, nobody really understands it completely. That's why we have a City Manager. That's why we have a law director, because these people are schooled and educated in these things, and, you know, not everybody has expertise in all these different subjects. But when they go across the table, you certainly should know something about them. But we get these AMP contracts to go across, and we're tied into a hydro. And their new hydro projects, hydro should be cheaper. The hydro out of New York.
Minister, I'm, are you three minutes up, sir?
Would you show me where the three minutes are, please? You brought it up. Show me where it's at.
Do you have three minutes?
You brought it up. Where's it at?
I'm only allowed to have a three-minute address.
You've never been shut down for three minutes. Never.
Council rules say three, two, three-minute addresses.
I will, if you show me where they're at, I'll be happy to stop.
You're a member of council, aren't you, sir?
Yes. They don't say three minutes.
You said that right here. You're a member of council.
Yeah, it's debate, John, not reports.
Well, I'm not debatable. I'm gonna read it.
Go ahead. I would love you to read it.
Excuse me, let me find it here. Might as well read it now than read it later. Duties under Section 3, the mayor shall serve as official ceremony head of council government, shall be recognized as a head of the city government by the governor for military purpose, by the courts, and for purposes of service, civil service. He shall be presiding member of city council and shall preside over all council sessions and shall be recognized as a member of council. Well, if you're a member of council, and I get two, three-minute things, you should have two, three minutes, too, sir. Quit going on.
John, we're talking about, we're talking about, you're talking about debates. I'm talking about a report. There's nothing about the limits on a report, John.
Oh, okay.
There's nothing there.
Well.
So just sit back and relax.
All right, sure.
So we're back to the hydro. Hydro should be cheaper than coal-fired or gas-electric. And we're invested in a what's called AMP Ohio. And New York Power has a hydro at Niagara Falls, and it's very inexpensive. And it's inexpensive because the plant's paid off. The AMP hydro is a new project with three hydro dams, and they're a little bit expensive because we're still paying off the debt. The quicker they pay off that debt, the cheaper the price is. The only problem with hydro is, last year, hydro only generated 67% of the time because if the river's too low, they can't generate. If the river's too high, they can't generate. There were pictures down there of some of the dams on the Ohio River that were completely underwater. There's no way they can generate. So weather has a lot to do with, you know, with generation, and the more they can generate, the cheaper our electric is. So it's important that they can generate, pay off the debt on the hydro dams. That will reflect in a lower rate to us. That's one of the ways that we can reduce the power generation rate, is to reduce the rate at the generator itself. AMP also wants to incentivize customers to help, you know, you have to come involved yourself with your electric. You need to, there's ways that they want to start next year incentivizing people to go with electric hot water, which is cheaper than gas. I need to see that again, but your heat pumps and the, there's a lot of push now for electric vehicles. If you have an electric vehicle, they want to give you a discount so you can charge your electric vehicle at home. So there's incentives that they want to, they want to do. The other thing is, we have what is called a coincidental peaking period, either one, two, three, four, or five times a year. During that, what we call one or five CP, the city shuts off their electric and they turn on the generators that we have, and they actually generate electric and put it back onto the grid. We generated it almost 890 meg last year and saved us $55,000. That $55,000 comes off the transmission rate. So the more that we can generate, the lower our transmission rate can go. And what we're going to try to do is somehow, we're going to try and get the city to understand when those peaking periods are. And it's usually a hot day here and there, whatever it is, and it's usually between 3 and 6 in the afternoon. We're gonna try to get customers to not use their washer and dryer and air conditioner and all that stuff during those peak hours so that we're not using electric, there's no demand, then we get a cheaper rate, and that's how we can work ourselves to help lower our rate. Sounds like a little bit of running around in a circle, but there are ways that we can help ourselves, and then we're working with AMP and trying to work at it on a different level, too. So I won't go into any other things because they get, start to get a little more complicated, but those are the things that we're trying to do to help lower the rates and work with AMP to lower the rates. And right now, AMP's looking and trying to help us to do that. I think that's all that I've got. Ms. Musson?
Dear Mayor, Members of Council, and citizens of Newton Falls, my, I have just a really brief report for tonight. As a finance director, I'm required to go for training with the State Treasurer's office. I have attended 10 hours of my Certified Public Investment Manager certificate that has been completed. And in addition, I just want to talk about the utility office. We are looking to hire a part-time meter reader, so if anyone is interested, please contact the utility office. That concludes my remarks.
Chairman Fritz?
I have nothing to report, but I'm available for questions, gentlemen.
Any questions for the law director?
Yes.
Mr. Beer? Mr. Bariak?
Yes, Mr. Fritz, there were a couple of occasions when Mr. Batista and I and Mr. Semper made a motion to overrule the chair. We had the three votes, and the mayor didn't accept it, and you did not speak up and overrule them. When we made the three votes and took the vote, and we thought we had overruled the chair, and you, the mayor, said, "Oh, no, 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 I'm not gonna go for that." And you let it go, and I'm gonna find it in the record, and I'm gonna show you. So now, but now, we, three votes will overrule the chair, right?
Depends on what the issue is, sir. If you go back to our reports, there are supermajority necessities, necessities that, and sometimes you only need three.
Okay. I don't read that anywhere, but I'll accept that till I find different.
Any other questions? Mr. Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mayor, Members of Council, ladies and gentlemen. Just a couple of brief points I want to touch on here. First of all, I want everybody to know that I am bringing on board for a temporary period of time an individual who will function as utilities' bill reviewer and/or direct assistant to the city manager for the purposes of examining our utility bills. That person will be placed in the office on Broad Street, 36 Broad Street, at a desk in where the code enforcement officer is, and I will be working very closely with this individual. Again, they'll only be on board for a limited period of time so that we can resolve some of these issues that people continue to contact my office with as it relates to their utility bills. But I'm expecting some success in that area, and I've met with a number of residents already. But I want to make sure that the finance office and the utilities director focuses on their work and that this special temporary bringing on board will assist in those things, and I think it will help expedite resolution of those issues. The second thing I wanted to mention is that I'm in the process of preparing a grant application for extension of the bike path over to Commerce Park. I've talked a little bit with Councilman Zavet about this, and she had a brief with the mayor about it, and I think it's gonna come up on the screen in a moment. Members of council, you have a copy of this photograph right now in front of you on your desks. But as you can see, there's a pink area to the left, which is the existing bike path, and then there's sort of a darker reddish area, which is going to be, if approved by the grant, an extension of the bike path over to Commerce Park. And the advantage of the application is that if it's approved, not only will the bike path be extended, but the grant will include additional monies to add further improvements to Commerce Park. And that's a really good thing because we've gotten a lot of attention over Commerce Park lately, and I expect that to be something that will be positively viewed by the grant authorities. And then last, what I wanted to mention is that we've had a lot of progress in terms of being able to get our videographer from Gregory Films out there and doing a number of things, and I'm gonna turn the volume on now and ask Tom in the control room to run a little bit, a little bit of what's going on there. I'm not getting any audio even though I'm pushing the, okay, let me try that. No, we don't. Okay, take a look at this, folks.
C-10, 5, touchdown Tigers, number 11, Paul Broderick on the run. What a play, DJ.
To the house, bread and butter. We've been preaching to keep that ball on the ground and good things will happen. Great blocking by the offensive line. Also, Paul Broderick, great read. As you can see right here, he goes ahead and he takes the snap. And as he goes ahead and takes the snap, look, look at the vision already. Upfield, the vision, one miss, two miss. Boom, he's already out in the open because they're expecting the pass. Now you have him and it's a foot race. And after this missed tackle.
Tiana Drake is in the back row.
Yeah.
And Savannah Bennett's in the front. And you'll watch them both rotate up.
Here we go again. All right. It's a nice start for the Newton Falls Tigers. Up 2 to nothing.
Up to me to kind of set an example. So, I want to be a good hitter so that they can also be good hitters.
All right. Elizabeth Baraka, outstanding game, nice going.
Under the leadership of Coach Tom Colasimo, the third item, excuse me, let me turn off Third item was the volleyball game. And it wasn't Kirk Goudy and Jim McKay. It was actually a certain anonymous broadcaster and Mayor Lyle Waddell calling the volleyball game. My only point is that we want to make sure that we project a positive image of our community out into the rest of the world so they know what we have here. And by the way, Kathy reminded me, please go to Newton Falls Television YouTube channel and make sure you just click the word subscribe. Takes about two seconds. So, we have more YouTube subscribers that will allow us to get on the Facebook platform at the same time as the YouTube platform. I guess my point, members of council and mayor, is that what we do here, there's so many outstanding things happening, but if we don't tell the rest of the world about it, we don't have a way of making sure they understand what a great community this is. And now we have a vehicle that makes it happen. So, I appreciate Tom Gregory of Gregory Films. And mayor, that concludes my report. I think there's a volleyball in your trunk, though, that they left there the other night.
Yes, no.
Any questions for the city manager? All right, any changes to tonight's agenda? Have a motion to approve the September 16th regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Discussion? For all, please.
Alberini.
Abstained, I wasn't here.
Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion on Court Read Ordinance 2019-26.
An ordinance amending ordinance 2018-23 authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Burnham &amp; Flower Insurance Group for employee health insurance.
So, a motion to accept ordinance 19-26?
So moved.
Second?
Yeah.
Can we get some clarification?
Yeah, we're gonna do. Yes, John. Which one of you want to talk about that one?
This is Burnham &amp; Flower.
Yes, yes.
This sort of relates a little bit, if I may be recognized, Mr. Mayor, relates a little bit to the question that Ms. Carl brought up. This is a renewal of our brokerage, not a renewal of the underlying coverage. So, the questions about coverage are not actually contained in this. Our renewal with the broker, which by the way, is no increase at all over last year's contract, will be such that then we'll bring back to council what the actual carrier name is. And it may be the same, it's a very good chance that would be the same. But the elements in this proposal are merely for the brokerage firm, that's all.
Mr. Lynch, are we gonna try to go for two years or not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Do you think we'll have any success at that?
I think we will. I think we will.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? For all, please.
Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Quick, please, read ordinance 19-27, 2019-27.
An ordinance implementing section 3735.65 through 3735.70 of the Ohio Revised Code establishing and describing the boundaries of community reinvestment area, CRA, in the city of Newton Falls, designating a housing officer to administer the program and creating a community reinvestment housing council in order to re-incentivize new commercial, industrial, and housing construction and rehabilitation remodeling in the city of Newton Falls.
So, a motion to accept 2019-27? Second?
Second.
Mr. Savet, did you want to start?
Yes, so this was something that brought to the city's attention. So, we are utilizing a portion of the Ohio Revised Code to establish a community reinvestment area that will establish rules and regulations for the remodeling and construction of residential, commercial, and industrial properties as it pertains to tax abatements on the improved values of those properties or the new values of the property, depending on if it's new construction or remodeling, depending on the structure. And depending on whether it's a residential or a commercial slash industrial, some of those get negotiated, some of them don't. So, there is some different things within this ordinance that are a little bit technical in terms of revised code and how you can navigate through the process.
Any other questions? One of the things that the CRA does is usually it's limited to an area. But I understand we're going to possibly do the whole city as a CRA?
If I may be recognized, Mr. Mayor, yes, the answer is yes to that. CRA means that if an investment is made within the CRA, the person making the investment has the opportunity for a limited form of a tax abatement. And it's approved on a project-by-project basis. Having said that, we are petitioning to have the entire city included in the CRA by virtue of the fact that I'd like to see investment in every single square inch of our community. So, and we're not the first community to do that, by the way. It's an aggressive way of attracting investment, and I think it's appropriate. This is just a first reading, by the way, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? For all, please.
Savet?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
All right, we need a motion to appoint a third ward council person for the vacancy.
I make a motion that we appoint Lyle Waddell as third ward council.
A second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Mayor, I'd like to ask you right now if you're gonna step down while we do this.
I will step down at the appropriate time.
Are you going to resign?
At the appropriate time, if that goes through.
I would like to, first of all, I would like to ask the law director if he's been made aware that there could be a potential ethics violation here right now. I would like to read if I could have the floor. Would I be allowed to have the floor? Are we in discussion?
We are.
I have this from the Ethics Commission. And in Ohio Ethics Law, I'm gonna go over this real quick. I'm gonna hit it and then I'm going to... It says, "A public agency has an open employment position. The members of the governing body agency are prohibited from applying for the job. A board member is also prohibited from using his authority to persuade other board members or employees of public hiring. If a board member wants to apply for an open job with the board, he must resign from the board before he submits an application or takes any other action to secure the job or benefits related to or holding the job. He must resign before he discusses the employment opportunity or any board member or board employees. He is prohibited from seeking the job while he was a board member and then resigning to accept the employment." That's why I'm asking you, sir, are you resigning now?
No.
Oh, you're not. You're not gonna hand over the gavel?
No.
Mr. Fritz, would you like to see this?
There without opinion, sir.
Okay, well, there's a lot more to it, Mr. Fritz. We may be getting into an ethics violation here. How can, how can the mayor let... Are you applying for this, sir, or not? That's the first question. Are you applying for this?
Did you see an application?
Oh, yes, but, Mr. Alberini, but you haven't said personally whether you are or not.
Why does it matter, John?
Well, I just, you could say, well, I decline the position. I just want to know. I want this on the record. I want it transcribed for the record. And also, I'm going to ask for a video and a verbatim transcription of all of that proceedings that are going on in here tonight. So, you will not step down now, right?
No.
Any other questions?
So, where are we at with this right now?
We're still in discussion.
All right. I'd make a motion.
There's already a motion and a second on the floor.
Well, what about anybody else that applied?
There's already a motion and a second, councilman.
Two. No one else gets a chance?
John, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? For all, please.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
No.
Savet?
Yes.
All right. At this time, I will submit my resignation to the council and to the law director, served by the position as mayor, and accept the position as councilman. It's been a great run.
Please hand over the gavel now. Please hand over the gavel. Please take your seat. The audience...
My seat's right here.
No.
My seat's right here.
Vice President of Council, sir.
My seat's right here.
His seat's right here. It's a gavel, John. Don't overthink something there, my friend.
Thank you.
Give me that.
Swear in before it can take any action, remember the board.
I would.
Give me the wooden thing. The round thing.
Oh, you can have that.
Here you go, John.
Okay, would you like to do that?
It's not my job. The mayor should do it. Yeah, the mayor should. I'm sorry. The Vice President of Council, lacking mayor, she's sworn in, councilman.
I stay today, yes.
I put a motion on the floor that we accept Mr. Waddell's motion already as mayor.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Barak, you need to ask for if there's discussion now.
I think there's need some clarity.
Accept his resignation.
Okay. What'd he say?
Mr. Barak, is we ask if anybody has a discussion on the matter?
I've asked for discussion on it.
Okay. And if no one's anything discussed, you can close the matter, ask for a vote.
You want to call for a vote, then?
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Yes, just where you are.
You need to swear me in at this point in time, sir.
The next...
Mr. Barak, somebody needs... We need to swear in the councilman before any action can be continued.
I swear in Mr. The mayor now is the third ward councilman.
We have to have this swearing in, sir.
You have to read that.
Hi, law. Well, Lyle Waddell is gonna read it here. Mr. Waddell, I'm gonna give it to Mr. Waddell to read.
Sir, you should stand up. The two should be together, as you've done with other appointments before.
He can read it.
You need to have him repeat after you so that he's making under oath, on the record, his acceptance of his office.
Mayor, John, if you could stand in front of the desk, that way you're near a microphone. If you stand by the wall, we won't pick up the audio. You move that chair out of the way.
You read it to me. I, Lyle Waddell, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Do you want to read it after me? As I read it?
Yeah, I do.
The Constitution of the United States, the state of Ohio and the charter of the city of Newton Falls, that I will not make any expenditure of public money or otherwise in the adequate consideration and efficient service of the city of Newton Falls, that I will not be influenced by consideration except that of merit of fitness in the appointment and discharge of employees, and that in the respects I will faithfully and impartial discharge and perform the duties incumbent on me as member of council of the city of Newton Falls from October 7, 2019, according to the law, having been elected according to best of my ability and understanding.
I do.
Swear to the law. There you go, sign it.
You have to sign that.
That's my chair, John.
Oh, that's your chair, okay, thank you.
Excuse me for a second while I look at this. What, is there going to be a change in this, or are the... What are the changes?
On the back of your sheet, right there in front of you, to your left, you see the right here. Right there, show them, Zach. It says, number four, motion to modify council committee.
Yes, I understand, but what are they? This is 61719. What are the modifications?
We gotta make a motion here since you put it on the floor.
Yeah, I understand that. Under the next order of business, we have a motion to modify council committees. I have a motion.
Someone brought forth that motion. It hasn't been seconded.
I just said, do we have a motion to modify council committees?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I want to appoint Lyle Waddell to the Economic Development Committee on Council.
I would like to second that if it's a motion, but...
Just discussion, okay.
Excuse me, Joe Man, yep, interrupt for a moment. You mentioned the information you have, there's something on the back. I don't have that.
I don't have it either.
The second page. Behind your...
No, no, no.
No, you're on your agenda, Joe.
Okay, all right, so, you're only making the one change, sir, is that what I understand?
Yes, for now.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, sure. I thought I couldn't see.
And the other spots.
And I'm sorry, and the other positions as well, too.
That Mr. Stuppert was in?
That Mr., yeah, filling the role that Mark Semper played.
So, the motion to modify the two.
Mm-hmm, yes, I'm sorry.
Would you hold?
All right, so we have a motion, excuse me. What are your... All right, so we have a motion, excuse me, what are your, what are your?
I made the motion, John, to appoint Lyle Waddell on the Economic Development Committee and also fill the positions left by Mr. Stempert. Does that work?
Mm-hmm. Nice. So he'll be on finance and administration and utilities. The mayor will be?
Economic development.
Yes, economic development.
Treasury investment.
TIB.
Finance.
Finance. I need glasses.
Tax review and enterprise board and fire district. As an alternate.
As an alternate.
Fire district is Mr. Beer, isn't it?
He'd be as an alternate.
He was the alternate, okay. We have a motion to accept the changes in the straw, are you?
The motion and a second, we just clarified it, so we're, we can go to discussion now, sir.
There's no other discussion.
Yeah, just roll call.
Well, he has the chair, he's.
Got you.
If you close the discussion.
Beer?
Yes.
Sevett?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
You asked for public comments now, sir.
Public comments.
Carl, 128 West Quarry. Well, that was surprising, but congratulations on both of your new positions. As far as things are going in the city, yes, there's quite a bit, quite a bit to do about the utility bills. And I'm thankful that there are processes in place for appeals, et cetera. And there is a new annual event that will be happening next year. And everybody so far is, all of the businesses, organizations, et cetera, everybody seems to be excited about it. And it will be a themed event, including some churches, oh, he left already. It will be next July 17th and 18th. We will start having meetings for it, and it should be very exciting. Commerce associations involved, the senior van, transportation, everybody is excited about it. When we start having meetings within the next month, Tremble County Tourism Bureau will be, I will be applying for a grant for this to help with advertising, et cetera, costs. Within the next month, we will be having meetings so that everybody can be involved. And it is to bring revenue into our businesses only, our businesses, because of everything that has been lost this past year to our businesses and the loss of revenue that they have had with the bridge closures. So it's geared towards our organizations, and any organization that wants to be involved will be involved if they so choose. The Cemetery Association, the Kiwanis, anybody and everybody. And it'll be Falls Wizarding Festival, is the name of it. If anyone has a better idea, they're more than welcome. The webpage will be going up also for it, which leads me to the next question. When's our website going to be finished, please? Can you let us know? And you can't answer me, I know that, I don't expect an answer. I don't want to get us in trouble. But thank you very much.
Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Tessa Splezer. I live at 220 Ashland Court. And I was also a candidate for the position in the third ward, along with another individual. The two of us are registered Democrats. Mr. Stempert was a Democrat. And you took the will of the people away when you replaced the vote getter, who was How can that be done?
Mr. Sevett?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Beer?
No comment.
Mr. Alberini?
No comment, sir.
Mr. Waddell?
Yeah, I would like to say a few things. I wanted to say thank you for those who have supported me over the last nine years plus. It's been a great ride. This position is very humbling and enriching. We've come a long way since 2010, whether you want to believe that or not. We've taken council and turned it back into a business meeting. We've enforced the rules and followed the rules as they're written, not as you think they should be. We have annexed property. I made three commitments, well, actually four commitments when I was elected. One was to annex the Route 5 area. One was to see that our employees got a raise. One was to improve the relationships with Newton Falls and all the outlined districts and boards and commissions and government entities here and around the area, and to merge the township with the city. The only one that we didn't accomplish was merging the township and the city, and I think that's an excellent idea. The Route 5 area, you know, it's only been two and a half years since we started doing that, working on trying to bring jobs and businesses, it's certainly at the forefront here. And we have done a lot of work trying to get that accomplished, and we'll continue to do that. So I would, you know, I'm expecting to continue the process that we have here today and keep it moving forward. And thank all of you for your support. Thank the those of you who have called today and talked about this and have read about it and heard about it one way or another. And I appreciate your concerns and your thoughts, and we'll continue to work for the city and the community and do the things that we need to do to move Newton Falls into the future. Thank you.
City manager?
No further reports this evening.
Law director?
No further.
Mr. Munson, the finance.
Nothing.
I'd like to tell the citizens of Newton Falls tonight that I've been through a lot in my life. I've been in a lot of situations where I've been to the wall. But tonight, I'm very ashamed, very, very ashamed that the will of the people has been thwarted. I came up tonight, even though I knew that I was going to be the Lone Ranger, but I came up with an argument that I thought the people should hear. I felt the other people that put in should at least have an opportunity to have, be heard about their qualifications, that this would be a fair democratic government. Tonight I saw no respect for the wishes of the people, although the charter, when we went to charter review, two-thirds voted against term extensions, which whether you say it or we don't, the people said, "We don't want anybody to serve more than eight years. We want to give everybody a chance. This is a democratic, democratic society." Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I would have been beaten back, and maybe I wouldn't have been right, but at least I feel the people should be heard. And I will not go against the people. I'm going to keep representing the people of this community no matter what, and to the last breath in my body, I'll do that. So I want to say one thing to the people. Please, if you're aghast about it, don't give up on your Newton Falls, because there are good people in this town, a lot of good people. And I hope that I did not do you any injustice tonight by choking up the way I am right now, because really I am choked up. Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'm going to ask, are we ready to adjourn?
We have an executive session listed on the agenda, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion to go into executive session. So moved.
Second.
Vote?
It's an executive for purposes of purchase or sale of property?
But yes, sorry, I have to name it.
No, no. Just discussion.
Yeah. For purposes of property. Make, vote?
Sevett?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know.